This your car, sir? Well, I thought it would happen. Did he hit you?
Yeah.
So where were you pulling out from?
Twenty eighth.
Which way were you going on twenty eighth street?
I'm turning right.
You were turning right?
Yeah, twenty eighth street.
So this is twenty eighth street, which way were you turning right to?
Uh, Pearl.
You were off Pearl, making a right there.
Uh, I'm working for the doctor.
So you were high Pearl, making a right this way?
Yes.
And then where, which way were you going?
We're both going that way.
We're both going this way. So which lane did you turn to, this lane here?
Yeah, I was supposed to do it.
So you were supposed to do it. And he was going this way on twenty eighth street.
We're both going that way, sir.
But he hit you. Where were you coming from on twenty eighth, or where were you coming from Pearl?
I'm off Pearl, twenty eighth.
Yeah, where were you coming from? That's how you're saying? Anything to drink tonight?
Uh, I haven't.
Had it? Why are your eyes all watery? Do you have your driver's license? That's not your license?
No, that's my registration.
Yeah, I don't need that, you need your driver's license.
Uh, I need my registration, yeah. Not the first.
I want to do some field sobriety.
I want to do it.
Your eyes are watery.
Yeah, they're watery.
I understand that you seem a little disoriented, but I don't know about Pearl.
I don't.
Yes, I do.
I'm frustrated, you don't.
Okay, well, we're gonna do some field sobriety. If we don't do that, then you're gonna be like the rest of the OBI, you understand? Do you understand? Do you understand? Yes or no? Are you going to do the field sobriety? Are you going to do the field sobriety?
I just showed my license, I'm sorry.
Are you going to do the field sobriety? Okay, you're under OBI. He was making a right on the twenty eighth, Pearl. He's got a good face, man.
One sixty one, and we need to pass on a brief.
Copy, say it again.
You don't want to cooperate with the sobriety, that's the thing that's so true, you understand?
Eleven, I copy, that's twenty eighth Pearl.
Not serious.
Eleven, see the fifty nine, which part were you in?
What do you mean a cute girl? The child cute? No, I'm trying to get you on.
Well, I'm gonna cuss it, ask you.
This is this car? Yeah, and it's involved in a crash, and you're under arrest. Crash, you're under arrest. You have an ID?
I have it.
One twenty six, direct to the left.
This one?
Can you do something, Luke?
Uh, what?
Loosen my handcuffs a little.
This one's not comfortable for you?
I haven't fought you, I'm not.
You know, I know, I'm trying to work with you.
You're not.
Yes, I am.
Your voice is dead, Chris. I've had a phone with you, God.
You've got a thumb whip ribbon, or lengthen between the cuffs there, you're cussing up your back. Watch your legs, sir, this is.
I'm in. I'm in.
Okay. Danger, Royal. Good one, sir. Yeah. Say again? What you got, boss?
I ain't, but he was.
Drinking a drink. I'll be back.
He wasn't driving?
Yes, he was.
He said somebody just hit his car.
Is that what he told you, is that what you saw?
No, he was just, he just didn't drive at all, he wasn't driving.
His car, he just told us that he was driving, and he just told us.
No, he said somebody just hit his car.
That's how it happened, right?
He said somebody, he was just in a car, and he was driving.
Is that his car, is that?
That's his car, he told me he said, "Somebody just hit my car." This is called police.
Yeah, because he did get into a wreck, but he left off of the wreck.
Oh, he was driving.
Well, he just told me he was driving.
Oh, he just, he just hit him five seconds ago.
He came in there to tell you to call the police, correct?
He told me to call the police, he said, "Somebody just hit my car."
He was in a wreck, and then he came in and told you to call the police, that's what happened?
No, he said that somebody just hit his car.
Yeah, he hit somebody's car with his pocket.
He hit somebody's car?
Yeah, that's what we're trying to tell you.
Oh, oh, he just left the bar.
Well, that's how, he left the bar, got in his car, is he at your bar, buddy?
No, we were just right here. We said, "Call somebody, somebody hit my car."
Yeah, yeah, because he pulled off, he pulled off a pearl on the twenty eighth street, and he didn't yield at this intersection, he, this guy hit. But he's supposed to yield at this intersection when you make a right, you understand? When you're going twenty eighth street, you have the right of way. And he's been drinking. So that's why he was in the back of my car. Yeah, um, you got there first, if you want, it's up to you, you do whatever you want to do. You want me to do the OVI? Okay.
Is that a deal?
Is he the owner of this place?
Huh?
You don't see the owner? U Y P nine five four. Yeah.
And I can run all those back.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Can I just give him my wallet?
Can you what?
Give him my wallet.
I can't hear you.
Can you open this divider?
I cannot open the divider, no. You want your wallet, you said?
No, sir, can I give him my wallet, is what I'm saying.
Give who your wallet?
The gentleman that's standing right there.
You know your plates are also expired, Mr. Royal?
Can I give him my wallet?
His plates are expired.
Yeah, his plates are expired. What's his ID number?
You call the ID, I'll get you the other one.
I have my insurance and the card, I have my insurance and the card, can I give him my wallet?
Okay, who are all these people?
They're all in the car.
They were all in the car, he hit?
Yeah.
No, there was only two guys in the car.
Eleven, I'm around the Pearl.
There's only two guys in the car.
Mr. Royal, just relax and let me do my investigation, please. Thirty four to forty six. It looks like Williams Kerr might have one, acid.
Be younger, we trust.
Michael Kerr, yeah, Michael Kerr, it looks like he might have one on North Homestead.
Yeah, it is.
Four fifty nine. That last car, he was in Eric Wright, correct? Fifty nine, give a warrant or assessment, that pretty, I'm not looking anything.
North Homestead. We'll have to check with dispatch, something. See if there's car.
Good.
You doing, Michael, or?
Yeah.
You want to step up on it, Mr. Kerr?
Yeah.
You can.
Open it. Open it up?
Oh, wait, my door won't open.
How'd you get in here, then?
I climbed out. They hit me and I climbed out that way.
Oh, okay, all right, well, let's go ahead and climb out that way, then. Are you okay? That's great, thank God.
Got it.
Whoa, whoa, get off the, off the gas there, pal.
Okay, sorry.
One fifty eight.
I'm gonna fix her up.
You might have a warrant up here, right?
All three thirty, negative.
Don't need a ring. How do we think? As far as you can get it? Sir? There we go. Loosen up a little bit, man, just call this guy. One thirty four.
One thirty four, bye.
What's your name again, my man? Twenty nine, I'm Michael Kerr. Go ahead and stay in the car, please. What's your date of birth, Michael? Nine twenty six to ninety five. Correction, nine twenty six to seventy seven, sir. Angel Royal, he's drunk. Yeah, he's asking for boss, but uh, he ran into this guy, he was making a right off Pearl, he didn't yield, the guy hit him. He refused to do the SFMTs. Um, that's really where we're at right now, so I'm.
This guy's Zion? This guy owns the Zion?
Yeah, it's Mr. Angel Royal. Yeah, that smashed up one of Angel Royal's. This guy might.
Thirty four.
Go ahead. So, like I said, I called you out here.
Just remember that I'm on homestead.
What's that for your social, bud?
Oh, five four eight two.
Fifty four eighty two, last four.
Copy, do you have charges?
As of now, no.
He just came into the bar, he says, "Somebody hit his car," he came, we was in the bar, he never left. He never left. This guy attempted to hit his car.
So, I need to stand by, I'm confirming, or go ahead?
It's a agent, you not gonna drive, 'cause we bumped your head, we're in pursuit, he never.
You can send a hic, um, if it gets confirmed, we're probably not gonna get ready to meet for a while, I swear by God.
He's got stuck by his car, every man that tries to run, he's never hit that car, they hit his car. I promise you.
I didn't know what you're saying, sir, but Angel actually came up to me and said that he was driving, and that this car hit him.
He never left.
He told me, he told me he hit this, he told me that he was in the car when this car hit him. He told me exactly which way he went, he told me he came off Pearl, made a right on the twenty eighth street, and this car hit him, that's what he told me.
He never, he never left the bar, just in his place, he called the police, somebody just hit my car.
All right, Paul, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what else to tell you.
I have to be honest with you, we both been drinking, I know we told each other.
I know, I know, you're a pretty cool guy, you don't get a lot of time.
We both in the bar, man, he's saying, he's going through some shit with his bike and stuff like that. I say, "Angel, I'll stay down at the bar now, and so we want to, if you give me, give me a ride."
My partner's gonna handle that, we're handling one car each, so my partner's gonna handle that.
Yeah, I bet you're in that car, he hit his car.
He's on a full guard now.
I mean, I'm just telling you what Angel told me. I mean, somebody was driving this car.
Yeah.
I haven't said anything besides I came off the twenty eighth street. The gentleman that was moving over a lane as the car was pulling out.
Well, I mean, I'm just telling you what he told me, I'm telling you what these people are saying too, they're saying that these people in this car are saying this car hit them. Angel's saying this car hit him.
I pulled over.
I just asked the guy, I said, "Did he, did he hit your car?" I said, "I don't know."
Maybe in front of that man? And probably the gentleman that you're arresting now?
He hit your car, he said, "I don't know."
And he's my driver, twenty eighth. I'm giving him my license.
Angel told me he's the one who was driving. And I refuse to do, I'm just telling you that Angel told me he was driving the car. I mean, what am I supposed to do with that? If someone, if you were driving, you told me you were driving this car, and somebody else came up and said, "I'm a cop." But you told me you drove this car, who am I gonna be fighting? You are him.
I haven't, that's not, I don't, no, no, there's a difference between saying, "Hey, I never, I'm not fighting with you, I just refuse to do anything."
That's okay, you're within your rights, no, you're not, you're not doing anything wrong.
I'm not arguing with you guys, like, we're not arguing. Just let, let us figure out what's one of our certain stories I mentioned of right now, and it's probably best to just kind of hang tight for a second, let us try to figure things out, and see what, like, the damage and stuff like that. I don't have my mind, myself. I give you my license, I'm blowing the show in. My insurance and my registration, he said, "I don't care." Okay, fine, you don't. You don't need to tell my car, 'cause I can drive it one block open.
That car could have been yours, totally.
Yeah, it's pretty bad, man, I don't know if you know how bad the damage is. It is, 'cause the car was hit down the street, and I pulled over to my first open location. Brother, I mean, just, 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 let me, I gotta, I didn't really get a good look. But, 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 I'm not fucking with you guys. And you guys, this is BS, man, this is. Let me, let me try to get out, I haven't had any. But I'm nowhere close to what he's saying, I don't care what he says.
Okay, just hang tight, okay, watch your, watch your heat. They're gonna. Yeah, it's on. One hundred, that's okay, like, the idea is.
Copy, he needs medical attention, he is flat now.
Do you have pictures?
He's in the crash.
I'm just doing the OVI, I don't, none of us have taken a picture yet. Okay. So, regardless of what has happened, who do you have your PC for, like, the OVI? Like, because the.
Please, Angel, you can clear, there was a fight inside Crystal Rock, twenty two fifteen, East twenty eighth Street, no weapons were seen.
He is, his eyes are watering, glassy, he's disoriented. He smelled, I smelled an odor of alcohol, this guy came over and said that, uh, he's the owner. He says the two of them were in the bar just drinking together, just now, so he's clearly been drinking. And I explained to him that if he refuses the SFMT, SFMTs, case law says he's gonna be immediately placed under OVI, explain that to him.
Thirty two, copy, one thirty three routing.
Okay. And then that's a decision that he's making, and that's fine.
Copy, no, I have this.
You guys do good pictures, so that they can reconstruct anything, that they can reconstruct, do you know what your PC is, or your stop, or your OVI? Do what you need to do with that, you know, I mean, you're competent, you're good at what you do. If you believe that this man is intoxicated, and you have, you know, by law, it doesn't matter, you know what I mean?
Please, Angel, he had a second break, eight hundred, West twenty second Street, and I will hang up, or nine one one, Neil was snapped in the leg. Standing over those residents, he stated that's not where it happens, the phone station is unknown response, which he had to.
I'm sorry, I have a warrant, he wants to.
Can I just take him by squad?
Why can't you do that?
Yeah, it's usually a party staff. Call an ambulance. Now we got somebody's staff, they just left, somebody with head trauma. Call for, call for an ambulance now, let them know that he needs medical attention. Contact North Homestead, see if they even want to pick him up. Yeah, if he has medical issues, they don't want to. I was gonna say, if that's the case, then.
Send him an ambulance.
Do you want to leave your name as a witness?
Yes. He's over the spot.
Okay, well, we'll take you down as a witness.
We'll take you down to where I saw her right now. We'll take you as a witness, but he, we're gonna take you as a witness, thank you, sir.
All right, if you could send Mike there, obviously, just advise more than said that he's been in the federal hospital.
Van Hill, C A R N H I L.
They were retired, so now they don't want to take him off, they said advise him, and they come out.
Three six, three sixteen seventy one.
Your phone number?
Six, uh, ten four zero, six five three, six one seven five.
Your social?
Four four deep, no, four nine, twenty three, three forty three.
Okay, we'll, we'll make, I'll put you down as a witness, and I'll put in what you said happened.
The guy hit his car, and new guy.
Standing over that area, he was not getting the message.
Okay, whatever he is.
Twenty six, left two, the right.
Some at Crystal Rock. You got alcohol? Is it Crystal Rock? Crystal Rock. No, Crystal Rock. You're good with, uh. I'm gonna give him one more chance, if, I mean, if he's, if he's willing to do. Do what you need to do, just like you would anybody. Oh, absolutely. You know what I mean? There's no pushing, I'm gonna try to rush, bad. Yeah, yeah, I hear you. Okay, Mr. Royal.
Tell me more, tell me more, Jack, in the key, you're up.
Yeah. Okay, um, I hope, don't.
No, no, I wanted to get, I just, I'm cold.
Yeah, I'm gonna turn the heat on for you, um, I'm gonna, I normally don't do this, okay? I'm gonna give you the benefit of the doubt, and I'm gonna ask you one more time if you're willing to do the field sobriety test.
It's going with Jack and the keys, sir.
So that's a no, then?
No, I'm.
You do under arrest, you do understand that you'll be placed under arrest for OVI if you don't do them, correct?
Sir, I, I've shown you.
You understand that, though?
Yes, I haven't been drinking.
Okay. That's the point of, okay, well, this guy over here just said you were in the bar with him drinking, and I smell alcohol, and your eyes are glassy, all this and that.
Can I have my jacket?
And, and, and. Where's your coat at?
It's in the car, my key's in the car.
Okay, I'll get your coat for you, move your leg in. You all right? I got a name, just, no, I'm gonna get a phone. Going with the dark. Yes. This officer's getting, like I told you, this officer's getting to deal with that car, I'm dealing with this car.
One thirty. One thirty, glad. Drive this way, seventy twenty. He has been finding the twenty second, with one of you just knocking on his door. Yeah, you heard someone being on the door, he's trying to tell me he's on Eli Avenue, he's not cooperating.
Huh? Yeah. All right, Mr. Royal, here's your coat, where's your wallet at?
It's in your pocket.
In your, in your pants pocket?
Yeah.
All right, I can't uncuff you, but you can put this on top of you.
I'm cold, I'm cold as hell.
Okay, well, go ahead and have a seat, and you can put this on top of you.
Please put that on top, I'm cold, sir, I'm cold in the back of your car. I haven't fought you at all, so I'm asking you.
Here's what we're gonna do.
Like, I'm not fighting with you, man.
We're gonna do this.
Not fighting with you.
I know you're not, I know. All right, go ahead and have a seat for me.
Angel, have a seat.
Angel, have a seat for me.
Like, I've been as cooperative.
Right now, you're not doing that, man.
Just be kind of.
Angel, have a seat, just have a seat. Angel, I'll take care of it, just have a seat. Have a seat.
I'm trying to show you my shirt, like, I've been as cooperative, man.
Again, go ahead and have a seat.
Man, I haven't.
Just have a seat. I'm totally cold, dude, I'll take care of it, man.
I've been as cooperative as I can be, man.
Okay, I appreciate it.
My hands is hurting, I've been cooperative.
All right, watch your head. You tell me what you want me to do, 'cause, uh, I'll let him in, if you're good here, if you're not, I'll wait, I mean, it's up to you.
You got the plate on the other car?
I ran it, I can, uh.
Car?
Yeah.
If you're either, like, NBC it to me, or.
Do you want Zooker to come in out with you, or let this guy in?
I'm probably fine, I just gotta, I gotta try to use a ticket, if you wanna wait.
Uh, I'll wait. Well.
Can I ask you, how come my house keys? The car keys, my house keys, all that, is, is that all in my pockets?
The what?
My house keys?
They're in your pocket.
So you dispatched my, you gave him my, I guess, the towman of my car keys?
Yeah.
But my house keys are, are in my pocket.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm cold, so I can't, I don't know if you have my keys or not.
I just told you, they're in your pocket. And your phone's up here with me. And I turned the heat up just now, okay?
I'm telling you, I'm not drunk.
Okay, well, I mean, I believe you are.
But if I say I believe you smell, that's a problem.
You're saying what?
If I said I believe you smell, you didn't take a shower, it'd be an issue. Like, I've been as cooperative as I can be, it's cold.
Not exactly, Mr. Royal.
I haven't had a jacket on in about thirty minutes, or twenty minutes.
Okay.
I'm shivering. This department's arresting me before, when I've been intoxicated, I'm not.
Okay.
I was hit. And the person that you have in the backseat was your driver. You don't believe me on that, huh?
On what?
The person that you arrested on the warrant was the driver of the vehicle.
The other officer's dealing with that vehicle, I don't know.
So, so, so I'm telling you, the person that you arrested on the warrant was the person that was driving the car that hit me.
Okay. I mean, I'm not really sure what that changes in regards to you being in the back of my car.
No, that's your accusations, but I'm telling you, the person that hit me is the person that you're arresting.
Okay. Again, I'm not really sure why you're telling me that.
All right. 'Cause I guess since you feel I'm intoxicated, my story means nothing?
I did say that, sir.
So. I understand I'm.
The other officer is handling the crash investigation, I'm only handling this OVI per, portion.
So, so. So, so my side story, he's not gonna ask me what happened?
He's not gonna ask you what happened?
That's what I'm asking.
I asked you what happened.
And I just told you, and you said, "Why does it matter?"
No, I asked you what happened in regards to how the crash happened.
And I told you, I was pulling out on twenty, off Pearl Avenue on the twenty eighth street, but the person that you arrested was the person that was driving.
Okay, well, we'll investigate that and figure it out.
And then you just ask? All right, I appreciate you, man. Do you need my chart?
I saw it in your vehicle, like I said, this officer's handling the crash, he'll take your insurance information.
Do I have a bail? Or a bond?
Of course.
And what is that?
Uh, I don't know yet, I'll let you know when I take you to the jail.
What am I arrested for?
Uh, right now, you're under arrest for OVI.
'Cause you're accusing me of that?
I've tried to explain to you as much as I can. I'm not really sure how, if I can, uh, get the point across.
What I'm trying to say is, I'm trying to understand, I was in the accident, you accused me of smelling like alcohol.
Well, it wasn't just that.
What else is it?
Your eyes are also red and watery, your speech is somewhat slurred, you're disoriented, and yes, you smell an odor of an alcoholic beverage. And your witness who's here on your behalf just told me that you and him were at the bar drinking before this crash happened.
Man, that's great, that's great that he said that? It's great he said that. It's great he said that.
I'm telling you that the field sobriety test is our way to further investigate this, but you're refusing to do that, which is why you're under arrest.
That's great. Not intoxicated, haven't fought you guys.
I didn't say you fought us.
And I'm telling you, the person that hit me is the person you're arresting.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm far from intoxicated.
One thirty-four. One thirty-two.
One thirty-two, though?
Twenty-nine, Nate Ward. Four seventeen, sixty-four.
I'm letting you know this left hand is tight, bro.
Huh?
I'm letting you know this left hand is tight.
Well, I checked the cuffs, you've got about a finger width gap in between.
I'm telling you, left hand is tight. Uh, I'm far from being difficult. Left hand is tight.
One thirty-two. What? Negative police.
And it...
Now they get you.
Is that for me?
No, that's for one of the other...
They hit me!
You said...
They're full of, look, my left hand is tight, sir.
Why are they saying they're ill?
I'm trying to tell you, the man that you arrested on the warrant was the driver that hit me, and my left hand is tight.
Right, well, do you need medical attention?
Uh, uh, I'm telling you, handcuffs, so if I need medical attention, it's because...
Well, we'll, we'll check him one more time.
And, and you, you, you've been cooperative with me, so it's not like I'm saying you... I'm gonna go off, I'm gonna cooperate with him, I'm gonna...
My left hand is tight. I'm, I'm gonna look at them, okay? This one's tight?
I left it. Man, I want medical attention with the driver. That was the driver.
Okay, I heard you. Now, you got a finger width gap in there.
All right, do the, do the right one, just a little bit. That's your driver, man. I'm telling you, all this stuff, boy, he hit me. He hit me. That's your driver.
And even this one's tight is because your hand is twisted, bro.
I don't even know. So, but, but, but I'm saying that...
Turn your hand in this way, there you go.
Well, I'm saying that the man that, 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 I'm gonna need the attention, that was one of the drivers, he hit me. I'm good, man, I'm not fighting the job, man.
All right, I fixed your handcuffs, go ahead and have a seat for me.
Look, I just wanted to go home, I was thinking, you got, you got my car key and my cell phone?
I already answered that, come on, have a seat.
Like, I'm cool.
The keys are in your pocket. Your phone's in my car. Yes. Okay, I just had a key. Angel, boy. Angel, boy. Don't, don't...
He hit me, man.
Okay, just see the car.
He hit me.
Watch your knee.
I'm, 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 some damn officer, he hit me.
Okay, watch your knee, Mr. Royal. I was trying to, uh, press some places. You can, yeah? The same way that we tested the boat, alcohol could brew. Only the driver. He just needs to drive. Do you know who's driving that? You figure out who's driving that car? Everyone...
Yeah.
Okay. Just whoever it's worth, Angel's saying that the guy in the back of your car with the warrant is the one driving, just whoever it's worth.
He may have been, I was wondering what that car is saying.
Okay, I, I'm just telling you, 'cause I, I, I don't, I don't know.
I fully, I fully believe that the guy with the warrant was driving. I fully believe that, however, everybody else in that car is saying that, can I, can I prove that he was?
Well, you've got two, is anyone, I don't, this guy's drunk, all right?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, this guy's drunk, this guy's drunk.
That's what I'm saying.
There's no way to prove it?
It is, it is what it is, but, uh, I mean, hon- honestly, I have absolutely no way to prove it. I have no way to prove it. Do I think that he was driving?
Yeah. Who's the owner of the car, this one?
I don't know, I can't run it.
How you doing, sir? Are you the owner of that car?
Yes.
Come on over here, a minute. Okay, okay, uh, you, 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 okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. Before we go any further, we're gonna start over from the beginning, okay?
Okay.
We're gonna pretend that you and I just now started talking, from the beginning.
Right.
All right, now, I have witnesses that are telling me who was driving that vehicle that you were in, and before you say anything, I wanna get through my skills, so don't interrupt me, please, okay?
Okay.
All right, so I have people who are telling me who was driving that car, I'm getting conflicting stories. Now, that's your car, correct?
Correct.
We're trying to work with you by not towing the car, technically, we can tow cars when they've been involved in a crash, all right? We're trying to work with you because you seem like a nice older gentleman. Now, what goes along with that is that, now that you're away from everybody, I need you to tell me the truth about who was really driving that car, because I don't want you to get in trouble. Okay, because if it's your vehicle, and I find out that you or whoever else is in that car is lying to me, I will charge you with obstructing and I will arrest you, okay? Because we have cameras all over the street, right now, we're busy, but, once we die down, I'm gonna go and check those cameras, okay? If I see someone who's not you, get out of that driver's seat, I'm gonna say that man lied to me, and I'm gonna come after you for charges. So, again, we're starting from the beginning now. I need to know, matter of factly, who was driving that car? And it, it, you, you're saying you were driving that car? And so, when I look at the cameras, I'm not gonna see that the gentleman who's in the back of my partner's car was driving that car.
Man, you what? You don't have a license?
Yeah, I don't really care about, I don't care about who has a license. I care about the truth. Because who, who had, who, who, who does or does not have a license is a matter of a traffic ticket and then everyone goes home. And once someone lies to me, it becomes a matter of who's lying to me, who's obstructing my investigation, makes me jump through hoops, then I just will lock everybody up who lied to me. Okay, so I'm gonna ask you one more time, who was driving that car? You were, so why are other, the other people telling you that you were not driving that car? I, I, I just wanted to know...
Okay, I, I got a friend in the backseat, and he'll verify, I was driving, this, this guy was up here, ooh, in the spotter, close to Mexico, he should, he started...
Where were you guys coming from?
He started making a...
Where were you guys coming from?
I come from home. I went to the bank over here. I can show you a receipt where I just come from the bank, and when I come down here, this, this guy made like a U-turn right there.
Okay, so, again, I, I, like I said, I, I...
Just like, and he kept running.
We're kinda at the point, at the, past the point of no return right now, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna check the cameras, I do have your name and information, if I do find out that you're lying to me, I will arrest you, I will arrest him, I will arrest the guy in the back of your car, and I will tow your vehicle.
Well, but I showed him making like a U-turn.
It shows the whole intersection, that's where I have to see Elston Trail Building, they have a camera right there.
Okay, and that's where he was, he was making...
So, you, you understand what I'm saying, all right?
I am.
That, I cannot, I cannot find out you're lying to me now that I've given you several chances.
Okay, he kept running back down here to the bar.
Okay.
Seven eleven, seven one, seven eleven, eight, that elderly couple, he was checking welfare, seven eleven, you know?
Yeah, there's nothing. Huh? Didn't know anything. How you doing, sir? Um, my, my question is pretty simple, um, it's not a big deal, a crash is a crash and a ticket's a ticket, it's not the end of the world.
Right.
My question is, why was old boy who was sitting in the passenger seats, the guy, the younger guy who has the warrant, why did he go to the passenger seat when he was the one driving the car?
He wasn't driving, his father was driving.
Why are there people telling me that he was driving?
I don't know why that...
You don't know?
Just them, because he been sitting here the whole time, and his father's driving, and we, we run out of the bank.
All right.
You need to borrow your computer for a minute?
Borrow it.
Mine's still not working.
Huh?
Did he tell you what I said?
Got in the back of my car, you wanted to say?
Did he tell you what I said?
He's in handcuffs right now, but, uh...
That the old man wasn't driving?
What's that?
Yeah.
All right, let's see.
We talked to him, and everybody in that car's saying that he was.
Yeah, because he has a warrant.
Mr. Royal, do you need medical attention?
No, I don't, I, look, I'm...
Okay, okay.
Look, man, I'm trying to be as cooperative as I can be.
Okay, I just gotta ask, okay? What you like?
I don't need any medical attention, not intoxicated.
All right, I mean, you can ask me if I'm cooperating.
I'm not intoxicated, I said it like four or five times, I'm telling you, the man that has a warrant was the man that was driving. The man hit me coming out of twenty-eighth street.
You thought you weren't driving?
Yeah.
No, I said the man that you arrested was the man that was driving. That old man was not driving.
Yeah, but you said you were driving.
You never respected you guys.
No, I've never said that.
On your paperwork, then.
Hey, I've never, hey, rewind your tape, have I ever said that to you?
I don't know, I haven't talked to you.
Ha- have I ever said that to your officer?
I don't know.
Come on, man, all right, man, I, I'm like a sergeant, or just take me in, now, well, well, you, now you're trying to, I've never said that from the beginning, come on, I appreciate you guys, man, now, now you're really trying to build it. I've never said that. I said that the man that has the warrant was the man that was driving the whole time.
I understand, you, you've already...
But I've never said I was never, I've never told you I wasn't driving. Did I tell you that?
I don't know, I haven't talked to you.
Did, did I tell that officer?
I don't know what you told me.
Yeah, I, 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 no, I've told him about four or five times that the man you have in the ambulance...
What kind of, what kind of car is that?
Do, do you investigate, it's, it's, it's...
What kind of car is that?
It's a Toyota.
I know that.
Scion. I guess it'd be a S C I O N. I showed them my license, I showed them the insurance, I showed them the registration. Now that you're trying to catch me up? No, no, come on, I've never said I was never driving, don't play me.
When I got, I got out of the car, and my son got out...
Don't play me, sir.
And this guy, that's me...
I've never said that from the beginning. I said that man that's in the ambulance hit me.
Like the other officer, tell you, leave everything alone, that way he would have been...
Okay. Okay, so, he wants, he doesn't want to take, he wants to get, maybe just release him.
Ask him if I told him that.
Well, he's...
No, no, whatever, 'cause now you're trying to play me, and I'm glad this is always recorded, 'cause I've been cooperative the whole time.
As far as I'm concerned, he can just go to the hospital, I don't really care to take him.
I said a Scion, S C I O N.
I gotta cut in the ticket.
What's your name?
You what?
Am I gonna get your name and your ID number? Please write that down for me. I'm trying to play him.
There you go.
Thank you.
Hey, tell your partner to open the door. Uh, can you ask your partner to open the door, let me put it politely? Huh? Can you ask him? I told y'all more than four times, or him? No, no, you're not, because I, you, you, no, 'cause I told him more than four or five times that that man in the ambulance was driving, and now you're trying to play me. 'Cause I told you that I, that he was the driver. You're not, bro, you're trying to play me, 'cause you asked me to settle, you never said I was a dri- no, you, uh, come on, man. I appreciate you, but you're trying to set me up on this one. Still don't feel the heat back here, it's freezing, I'm still shivering. I mean, it's eleven o'clock, ten o'clock at night, he's got sunglasses on and in the back of ambulance. His ass was driving, I'm trying to tell you that from the start, I'm far from what y'all accusing me of being tonight. My license is valid, insurance is good, I told him from the start that he was driving. And what'd you tell me when you got in the car? What'd you say? No, it's not, but what'd you tell me when you got in the car, you said, I didn't ask you?
Thirty, I'm thirty-three, I'm on my way now.
Do you need the guy's trailer vehicle still, or they can they go?
Yeah.
Hey, officer, did I tell you? Hey, now, now I'm getting agitated, man, like, I've been cooperatively like can be.
Huh, when will I? Now, wait, I have to go back to the station, I have access out here.
Yeah.
Haven't fought y'all from the start, like, I'm...
All right, you guys can go for now.
I'm gonna see where someone can be.
Let me have to go. One fifty-two, call.
Fifty-two, bud.
I'll be back in Rod's Beaver Crest, something else, hold.
Forty-two to fifty-two, any backup? Good, thank you. Seventeen, uh, one thirty-four. God. You still on scene, or are you on the way to the station? I'm still on scene, station, up here. I'll be ten nineteen here in a couple minutes.
You all being over, uh, ACVA ordinance?
ACVA?
Yeah.
It's, uh, three 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 point oh three.
That's what it would be, right?
Huh?
And that, that is what it would be, right?
I don't know, what happened? Was it that, or did he fail to yield on a right turn? I didn't really, I didn't talk to the other guy.
The other guys were sitting there, they were parallel with each other, and he went to make a U-turn from this lane, so he was in this lane, they were in this lane, he turned like right into...
Make a U?
He made an unsafe lane change?
Maybe.
They were in the left lane, he pulled a right lane, and he took, and he turned left, and he said that he was...
Does that make, have you asked me what happened?
Went to make a U-turn? He went to make a U-turn from this right lane?
Doesn't make any sense.
Angel.
You haven't even asked me what happened.
He already talked to you, bro.
But, but, obviously, you haven't, 'cause I told you, I, I told you the other guy was driving, and you said he didn't tell you.
Who did hit them at? What brother car did he hit them?
On the passenger side, like, right in the tire.
Come on, man.
And U-turns prohibited, if you made a U-turn, hit them.
Come on, I live on this block! I live on this block!
In my opinion, it was, it was an actual ordinance for U-turns prohibited.
I live on this block, and he didn't tell you what happened, 'cause I told you that the guy that was in the ambulance was the driver. So, obviously, he didn't tell you what happened, and you haven't asked me what happened. I'm not intoxicated, I live on this block, I was going to Seneca, and I was gonna make a right turn, and then I was gonna go to thirtieth and make another right turn, I live on this block. I need both y'all badge numbers, and I need both y'all car numbers and your names, 'cause now y'all on some BS, 'cause I'm not fighting, but now I'm irritated, because I didn't violate any laws. You can say whatever you want about my eyes or my smell, 'cause you look tired, and you smell like ass, too. Some BS right now, swear to God. I have a license, have insurance.
Alright.
How you got here?
I'm clear.
You didn't tell him, you didn't tell him what I told you, did you? Obviously not, cause he said he, he talked to you, I talked to him already. Can I go? Can y'all take me to jail or post my bond? You got a car. You didn't even ask my side of the story, man, you're on some BS.
Huh?
There's door stickers.
That's three for the flowers off.
Well, I mean, if I have to change it from...
Uh? What? Whatever you determine to be the, the cause of the crash, you just put it there.
But ask him, does this story make sense, cause obviously, you, you did not tell him that I said the guy that was in the ambulance was the driver. No, well, if you listen to your video that he just showed, that, that, that will be showed, he said, you didn't tell him that. That's what he just told me right now on the squad car.
I don't know what he told you.
I don't care what you know, I'm telling you what's gonna be recorded. I said the guy that was in the car, look, come on, history, I was making a U-turn, I live on this street, why would I make a U-turn when I live on this street? On this block, I'm sorry, what, I go to Seneca, I make a right?
This is what we have, course for him.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm telling you, does this story make sense?
I'm not handling the car report.
And, and, and when I told you the other guy was driving?
I relayed that information to that officer?
No, you didn't, cause, listen to the video.
One thirty-four.
Thirty-four now.
If you can add to the call, the male on here is Angel Royal, twelve, two of eighty-two, I'll be ten nineteen, I have BAC testing, mileage unknown.
Send that to the news, you guys are killing it, man. That's right, ain't it? What's my bond, sir?
I don't know yet.
I haven't resisted you guys, so what's my bill, my license is valid?
If I knew, I would tell you.
What am I charged with?
As of now, they're gonna be OVI, and whatever traffic charge that officer gave you.
One forty-six.
There shouldn't be any traffic charges, the guy hit me. Obviously, you haven't translated that to him, cause when I, I told him the other guy was driving, he said, "I know nothing about that."
Not sure how many times I could tell you the same thing, Mr. Royal.
You can tell me whatever you want, that's what he said on the video, that's what he told me when he was sitting right here.
Well, my video record's been on the whole time, and it balled my voice. So everything that I told you is on recording, I got no reason to lie, you have no dog in this fight.
I, I don't care if you have a dog, a cat, whatever you have, I told him, I said I wasn't driving, he goes, "I don't know nothing about that, that's not what they're saying, that's what he said, that's what he said."
B ten-eight, report, one tight, a bridge.
Fifty-two, one. One fifty-two, go ahead.
Appreciate you hitting them good bumps.
Excuse me?
Appreciate you hitting that bump.
Well, I mean, I'm not charged or paid in the streets.
Hey, but you know it's there.
One forty-six.
Forty-six, go ahead.
I'll also have a CPA, one thirty-four is gonna have the OVI portion.
Dispatch has been locked.
One fifty-two, left. One fifty-two, left. One fifty-two, that's negative.
One thirty-four.
Thirty-four, go ahead.
Heading mileage unknown, if you could raise the north Sallyport door, please, break.
Go ahead.
I'll need a witness at the BAC, I don't know if you can see if car is available. Thirty-four, you can secure the Sallyport.
Can we go?
A minute.
Should I have all that, come on, man, we, I've been in the back of this car, my, my fingers is numb now.
I made the cuffs as loose as they can be.
Nah, I'm not asking you to let my cuffs go, my fingers is numb, it's cold back here, I've been telling y'all that. I'm in as cooperative as I can be, man.
I appreciate that.
Now, now you ODing it.
Come out, Mr. Royal. Put your phone in your ticket, yeah?
You got my keys?
Oh, damn. The key's in your pocket, sir. Put it in over here for me. Anything in your pockets? Alright, Mr. Royal, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna unhandcuff you, and you're gonna have to sit on the bench, okay?
Can I go back?
Once we're done, you can. And the sooner we get this done, the sooner we can do all that.
I told you, the guy that you had in the ambulance was the driver, and when the, the guy that you said was in charge of the accident, when he got into your car to check it, he, he told me that's recorded, he goes, "You told him nothing." I told you four or five times, the guy that was in the, that in the ambulance was the...
Have a seat for me, Mr. Royal.
No, this is BS. Gonna make sure this is off by five in the morning, I've been as cooperative as I can be, and I told you the guy that was in the ambulance.
Alright, Mr. Royal. Mr. Royal. Have a seat for me, sir. Have a seat for me, please, sir.
Are you gonna charge me with resisting now?
I don't wanna go that long, okay?
You gotta have me listening to anything I said.
Now, I have to read this to you, you are now under arrest for operating a vehicle under the influence of alcohol, drugs, or a combination of them. Operating a vehicle under the influence of listed controlled substance or a listed metabolite controlled substance. Operating a vehicle after under age, operating under age, having physical control of a vehicle under the influence. If you refuse to take any chemical tests required by law, your high driving privileges will be suspended immediately, and you will pay a fee to have the privileges reinstated. If you have a commercial driver's license and refuse to submit to the tests or test, you will immediately be placed to have service for twenty-four hours. You will be disqualified from operating a commercial or vehicle for a period not less than one year, and you are required to surrender your commercial driver's license to me. If you have a prior conviction of OVI, OBOEC, or operating a vehicle under the influence of listed controlled substance or a listed metabolite controlled substance, under state or municipal laws in the preceding twenty years, you are now under arrest for state OVI. If you refuse to take a chemical test, you will face increased penalties if you are subsequently convicted of the state OVI. If you have previously pled guilty to being convicted of two or more OBIs, OBOECs, or equivalent offenses in the previous six years, or pled guilty to being convicted of five or more OBIs, OBOECs, or equivalent offenses in the previous twenty years, or pled guilty to being convicted of felony or above violations, and you refuse to submit to a chemical test required by law, and must otherwise use whatever reasonable means necessary to ensure you submit to a chemical test. If you take any chemical tests required by law, and are found to be at or above a heavy amount of alcohol, controlled substance, metabolite, controlled substance in your whole blood, blood serum, plasma, breath, or urine, as set by law, your high driving privileges will be suspended immediately, and you will pay a fee to have the privileges reinstated. If you take a chemical test, you will have an independent chemical test taken at your own expense, you will get a copy of this form. With that being said, are you willing to submit to a breath test?
No.
Okay, very good. At this point, you're gonna be placed under an administrative license suspension, okay? I'm gonna write out your paperwork, and then, we're gonna take it from there, unfortunately, tonight, our jail is closed, okay?
You want tickets to the county now?
That's what, it looks like it's gonna happen. You will have a bond, you will have a bond.
Can I call here, or do I have to go to the county?
What I'm gonna have you do is you're gonna sit here, okay, I'm gonna get your paperwork taken care of, and now answer any questions that you may have.
I'm washing my hands. Cause it was recorded in the back of his vehicle, and I told him four times, the person that had a warrant was the driver of the vehicle. Then, when the person that was, as he told me was in charge of the investigation, came to his vehicle and said, "My computer is not working," jumped in the back of his vehicle. Then when I said, "Hey, the person that's, the person that was in the ambulance was the driver," a worker? No, it was the driver of the car, that did accuse me of doing a U-turn on the eighteen hundred block in the accident. Ten o'clock I live on, where I was dropped in the Seneca, I was gonna turn right on Seneca, so there's a pretty big difference right back on my block, which was no need for me to do a U-turn. The other officer said, "He never told me."
Deputy clerk and witness.
Well, here's the deal, that, that has nothing to do with the accident, no, that's fine, what I'm saying is, man, I, I've done everything.
And deputy clerk.
I fight you guys one hundred percent, it's God's decision, just, I mean, here's the deal, man. You're doing what you think is best right now, alright, just do what you're do- As far as the crash goes, there's gonna be no evidence that you said that guy was driving, that's not, that's not my opinion. I'm not intoxicated, you can say that, tell her that, or, 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 I'm not, I'm not ready to give you the blood, sir. Your eye is off, you're too young to relate. You have, you have to say, alright, take, take, well, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna take question, I'm with you, here's the deal, man, the blood. At the end of the day, you're gonna have to prove that you're intoxicated. I'm not. Okay, well then, that should be... But I'm pretty sure, but I'm pretty sure, come five AM, this report will be to all the people, cause you gotta get the flip that with me. We're, I'm telling you right now. Not you, uh, me, I got a good reason to do it, what about you? It's, it's one of those things, man, that, you know what, if somebody... You're, just like it's a cop guy, do we, man? That's not true, that's not true at all, I, I, I talked to an officer today, and I told him that you had his charge dismissed a couple, couple weeks ago. Maybe you can ask for the same, whatever, I mean, I don't know, that's, I, that's not, come on, come on, Jay, not true, bro. I'm telling you now, when we even get into it, what would they tell us, I mean? It's not true, cause I, our stuff, what if I have to prove it right now? I'm, I'm not sure.
I was gonna say, cause you have the opportunity to prove it right now.
You may not prove anything. You got, you got the truth, you may not. I'm not, you're right, you're right, but I'm not, man. Well, that's, that's the thing, right? You're right, that's, you're right, that's alright, you gotta work, that all wrong. We have to prove, we're gonna have to prove. I'm gonna act that. I'm gonna act. I'm wondering if I can, if maybe it's the, uh... Can I look to back? But they should seem, he's been watching. I'm like, I've had, I've had, I've been in trouble, he looked at me. I'm, I'm, I'm still hurt, I'm, I'm still... He, he looked at me four times, but I, I, two times, I'm still... I've been at a cooperative, I can't eat. It's a doo in the dark.
One fifty-two, go ahead. One fifty-two, go ahead.
Well, be sitting advised. She, she is like, I'm fucking proud. There's like a real, it might be in here, but there's a real funky, like, one light switch that does like half of these, and then another light switch does another one. I think it's in the DB, though. Well, the ones for the hall leads are by the entrance door, DB. Yeah, but that's not the... Right, it's, it's, there's another goofy weird light switch somewhere. I don't know exactly where it's at, but it's like, I think it's either in there or somewhere in the DB.
Mr. O'Royall, come on over here. You're just gonna sign saying you don't wanna take the breath test. Yep, yep, yep.
If you're in the county, can I make at least a few calls, rather than... You got my phone, my number. Is, uh, it's up to the officer, um...
It's, it's gonna depend on, on how you're acting, okay? If you go over there and sit down, let me do my paperwork without interrupting me, that shows me you're cooperating, and I'll let you make a phone call, but if you keep, if you carry on and you keep interrupting me, then I, I'm not gonna let you do it. Okay, so if you wanna use your phone, go ahead and have a seat, and let me finish my paperwork, okay?
I was gonna say, there's the phone. There's the phone there, but that's once, once you're done. I'm sure there's phone calls. We're filling down this paper.
Mm-hmm. That wouldn't be a good idea. Now, I'm me down here. You know what, I don't have a booking for it. I'm gonna have to have the booking shit down here. I'll be right back, sorry, I gotta see if I got booking paperwork on my car. Yeah, can you buzz me this?